Air conditioning that turns on during the day would be good. Yeah, only to see you with blood that didn't get cold all the time. Sorry, I don't know.
You're born.
Apparently she likes it like a sauna.
Yes.
It was on before.
Yeah.
You don't get a vote.
Me?
Yeah.
Why?
Holy man. Would you ever be here?
No.
No.
Yeah.
You don't get a vote.
The camera's not on, but I don't know. No, that's the video.
That was working yesterday.
I get two votes.
Can I start the meeting and I will work on trying to get the video up? There is an issue with the video.
Good evening. I'd like to call us meeting to order. Special meeting of council. Moved by councillor Corbett, second by councillor Featherstone, but the special meeting of council be opened at seven oh two P M. All in favor? Carrie?
It's live.
It is live?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest in general nature there? Hearing none, we'll move forward. The first item on our agenda is a presentation by Bill Love of the First Bike Committee and I'm not sure of the other gentleman, but I do see Alma Rose here. So welcome and we're happy to hear your we'll be happy to hear your presentation tonight.
And Bill Ferguson. Bill Ferguson is the other guy.
Okay.
Well, it is. It was actually Bill Love who, and here he is now, who 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 set up the meeting and I'm here tonight. I'm William Ferguson.
I'm Steve Philpott.
Steve Philpott and we're with the Fire Up Five Oh Three Committee. And we're here to talk about that and the first spike and a few things like that. And Bill is also with us. And just support our presentation. Right. So I think that before at tonight's meeting, a slide deck was circulated to the group that you have in front. And given the whole tech situation here, let's just look at the paper version. We're going to do the same thing and work our way through it. We do appreciate the time this evening to talk to you and Caesar said in here, get my deck to actually progress. All right. Here we go. So we have a little bit of a presentation. We shouldn't take too much time, but we just wanted to come tonight and give you a bit of an update on what's been going on with the Fire Up Five Oh Three project. In fact, we made a presentation to think back in 2019 and to nobody who's here today. So this will be the first introduction to this for for the people at the table, but it's an exciting project because something we've been working on that has unfortunately, like everything else in the world, been delayed a few years by the COVID epidemic, but we're back on track, so to speak. And we just want to go over a few key things and some of our key takeaways tonight are key talking items tonight. Talking about the structure of our advisory committee, the local tourist infrastructure, the unique opportunity that exists for this project. The cash positive operating operating plan that we have, why we're proposing steam versus say a diesel operation, the local economic impact potential and how you could potentially assist us with the project. First off, we have the advisory committee. And so this is designed to be kind of an arms length body that provides legal advice, funding and fundraising advice, rail operations and safety, tourist operators, steam locomotive expertise, social media governance and corporations. Working group and we're working on building that advisory committee at this point in time. Why that? Because in the the project that we are embarking on will have a lot of volunteer effort involved. We'll have a lot of folks who are really intensively involved in actually doing the restoration work, setting up of the operation. And we need sort of a board that will also oversee and provide guidance and keep us on track and on budget and that kind of thing. So that's the idea of buying having an arms length advisory committee.
Tourist, local tourist infrastructure. We have done some research and found out that from a tourism operator's point of view, we've reached a critical mass when it comes to getting people on tour buses and up here. It's, I'll explain in a moment a little more about that. We have hotels to sleep in. We have restaurants, casinos to gamble in. And any number of infrastructure that can be used for tourism. We have attractions, quince, the casino, restaurants, and hopefully a tourism train. The the train itself would complement what we have now and hopefully bring people to an overnight stay, which is where the revenue was going to come in. I just wanted a few notes on that. We have people driving by in the Trans Canada and but are we a destination really? We want them to stop in our area. We want to fill tours, tour buses. But will people come that far to to stay overnight to golf here or just be in this area in general? And we have everything we need to accommodate, feed, entertain, educate any number of tourists. But we need something unique enough to bring them here and already.
Yeah, and to and to speak to the point that Steve is making, you know, if you go back 30 years ago, the region, North Bay in particular, is the center of the region in general, was a destination for tour operators. In fact, back in the heydays of the information center in North Bay, the model railway, the Quince Home, five, 10 buses a day would come in in the summer, a lot of them from the U S, many of them from Southern Ontario and stop there as one of a couple of destinations. They would check into North Bay and a real win was one of us would come there, then maybe go on to do the chief command and maybe spend the night before they move on. That's the best room for for the market. In the past couple of decades, that's kind of gone away. One, because that attraction disappeared and honestly, the people who were most interested in it got gray and old and moved on. And two, because the rest of the infrastructure didn't keep pace. So what we've seen in the last decade is a big investment in the hotels, better quality hotels, newer brands, newer change which people like and tour operators like. We've seen some investment in the tourism infrastructure and with the for the destination marketing, especially in the city, we see some emphasis on tourism we haven't seen in the past. And what we also see now in North Bay because of the casino is that other piece of critical mass that's there. That's a reason to go beyond Ravenhurst, beyond Huntsville, come for a north, spend the night. The steam project fits into that really well. It gives that one more thing that you can do, one more reason to come and and to to work in the market. So in consultation with industry experts, we think there's an opportunity for this attraction at least to benefit from that happening and and seeing the boost in the tourism infrastructure.
Unique opportunity. The I'll just follow our points at the moment are no mainstream tourist operation in Canada has operation on a mainline track. The nearest one, I think, is Pennsylvania.
Yeah, it's about 10 hours away. Pennsylvania is operating steam locomotive on a mainline track.
Right. Is that from here or from Toronto?
From North Bay.
From North Bay. Okay.
Driving fast.
Right.
A fast drive.
Yeah.
And I held up the border.
The city of North Bay already owns engine five oh three and as far as we know, it's ours for the taking in some way, shape or form, but we don't have to buy. The region has a good railroad infrastructure and additional trains, very few places to have this opportunity. So as far as I know, not being a railroad man, we can go northeast, southwest and cover any number of any distance provided we had permission. So this meeting will help us get permission to to go in that in that direction eventually. So the the area's heritage, the tourism train creates a working rail attraction, a tourist identity that fits the region's rail cultural heritage. This I took a tour with Elmer. That was lasted about four hours more than I thought it would. And we we ended up, I get a real taste of the history of the area. I was, it was fascinating, to be honest with you. Anybody loves history is going to to really enjoy coming up here. And the the rail history is obvious. Elmer's fourth generation. Yeah. And I mean, that sort of says it all about about what the history is here. And in in town, in North Bay, we have all the facilities to maintain and repair anything we need to in in terms of railroad. So if you wanted to expand on that or?
Yeah, I think in terms of the unique opportunity, as Steve was saying, there is no mainline steam tourist operation actually anywhere in Canada at this point. And the closest one is in the U S. You might say, well, I've heard there are steam railways. You know, there's one around Kitchener area. There's one around Midland, that kind of thing, Alston. There are, but they're they're stuck on very short segments to track that have basically gone to them rather than being abandoned. So in other words, typically five, six, seven kilometers is the maximum length. As an attraction that will actually generate revenue and be sustainable in the long haul, it's not quite long enough. So the trick is to have something that's that's long enough to be a fulfilling experience, but not so long that people are born and will never do the name of their life. So you have to be in between. All of those suffer from being a little on the short side for repeat business. Other things that we've seen in the past year, an example, the timber train was the other way. It's just too long. It's one and done and people don't want to do it a second time. So.
We have a possibility to expand and contract is necessary as well.
Yep.
Gas positive operating plan. And this is pretty straightforward. Not for profit organization with a business focus. And that means as it was said, it was pointed out to me that any anywhere where you kind of get your hands dirty working on an engine, that's a professional is going to do that and he'll be compensated. But everything else pretty much will be volunteer driven. And that will will encompass all the people that we visit and with the train and kids working on the train, maybe university students. Sort of an unlimited idea in that respect for creating new volunteers at a young age and all of this sort of thing. So it has to be more than one. Yeah. What were you saying? Has to be one more than one experience. We've got plethora of ideas and probably more to come on how to create an interesting, repeatable trip. Some of them are holiday trains, Christmas, Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Halloween ghost trains. Just just goes on and on. Some of the interesting ones are people who are train fanatics and they may be hiring the train just to take photographs. Which might be interesting to get a photograph where the first bike was driven as an end east for for somebody who really is interested in that. So yeah, there's and then we've got rails and ales as part of seeing the leaves in the fall. And regional plowing matches, et cetera. Any any events that come up that that well, it'll be the anniversary of North Bay. And and that sort of thing. So I think that pretty much covers.
Yeah. I mean, basically, we kind of envision three categories of excursion. The one is sort of the regular excursion train that would be able to tour operators and the people who are traveling through the area operate on some kind of regular schedule, not determined yet, because this is all in conceptual stage. But it could include a theme. You could have a train robbery, you could go into town, that kind of thing, stop for lunch, get back on, head back and get underway. The kind of holiday trains that Steve was talking about, Christmas, Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, Canada Day, Halloween, special effects, the stars, more for the local market as opposed to the outside tour market. And then the sort of steam specials and corporate charters are ready for avid groups. So this, these are our folks that do the business. They call them the farmers. They really want to come and take pictures of trains. They'll spend a lot of money. They're looking for a special experience and you can offer that and it's it's lucrative for the the nonprofits to do something like that. So that's sort of the the kind of idea on how the the rides would work. So that brings up a couple of of other key points. One, and the first one that Rob asked is why is the why is the steam locomotive? It seems difficult. All of you have maybe one time or another have seen the the five oh three locomotive. We used to sit in Lee Park for many years. Sadly, it's sat down sort of behind set of running the bus station in North Bay in recent years and it's in pretty derelict condition. It's pretty rough. Some people would say it's ready for the scrapyard. But why steam? The reality is that they have the power to draw tourists from long distances and to draw people in. They draw more than diesel attractions by a tremendous percentage. And the reality is that even in most remote locations, they have the ability to bring a lot of riders. And an example that we look at, the Northern United Railroad brings in 35,000 plus riders. It's four hours north of Las Vegas, four hours west of Salt Lake City. It's on the loneliest highway in the contiguous United States, Route 50, is three steam locomotives in operation. So what's the thing that's bringing the people there? The steam operation. If it was just a diesel ride, would they see the traffic? No, nothing like it. I'd be lucky to get 15% of that. Steam tourist operators report 30% drop in ridership and a 40% drop in review when they can't run the locomotive. So in other words, people call in and say, hey, is the steam locomotive running today? Oh no, we have a diesel on. That's the bounce rate. They use a technical term in modern these. 30% will bounce right away. Revenue falls 3% when that happens.
I have just a little note here. Who's running steam locally? The Portage Flyer occasionally out of Huntsville. That's a two kilometer track. Simcoe Heritage, Tottenham. As I understand it, they are not using that too much right now.
It's almost out of hours.
Yeah, they're all almost scheduled. So that was a 50, a 50 minute trip, round trip. And I'm sorry, the Waterloo Central. Now Waterloo Central runs between Waterloo and St. Jacobs. That's a round trip of 40 kilometers. So a 20 minute, 20, 20 mile track, kilometer, excuse me. And they do a very nice job, but if you've done it once and gone to the market from Waterloo, you need steady new people all the time, I think. So.
Yeah. So keeping on that same thought of why steam, it is a huge rock. So it's huge to accept the operation, but has huge challenges as the last generation of steam expertise is mostly gone. So one of the challenges we've had in the last couple of years and looking at the project is the condition of the locomotive. And look, this really didn't be fired up again as possible. Is it doable? What would it even cost to do something like that? And we talked with experts in the United States, because that's basically where most of them can be found at this point. And had a variety of opinions, but most recently we have worked with a company called F M W Solutions, which specializes in in doing this kind of thing. It's one of the divisions. They're a rail services company. One of the divisions looks at restoring steam locomotives. And working with them, we discovered that they have started with locomotives in worse condition, with more things missing and more problems and brought them back to full speed. And they've done this not once. They've done this 10, 15 times. They have about five projects, six projects on the go right now. So they are the experts in the field. They have the managing, the management, engineering, code and mechanical know how contacts to be able to do it and experience for operating restoration of the steam locomotive for mainline use. So their kind of expertise can be full hands on or full hands off where volunteers do most of the work. Complete with ongoing operating, maintenance, train, all of that kind of stuff. So we are very confident the locomotive that's current state actually can be brought back and fired up. We look at some examples, as Steve has mentioned a few, another one that that we've looked in the past is the operation Camloops based on the waterfront started from ground zero in 1994. And the tourist train started operating in 2002. They got 10,400 passengers in their first year. Operated excursion event trains to start and then limited to vent trains only. And now they're not operating, getting track access issues. So again, they're stuck on a small piece of track that makes operation difficult for them. In terms of the benefit to the the local economy and I think the greater economy of the North Bay and the Pacific area, a railway attraction, we predict up to 10,000 visitors overnight annually. An average stay based on using the model for tourism Northern Ontario, it's brought by the R T O is 3.2 nights, average spend per trip, $821 a night, not including attraction cost, potential about $8.2 million. Now that those numbers are a few years old, so you would inflate them based on the current market. You'd also do some modifiers based on where the market sits presently, but tourism in general is starting to make a significant comeback. We predict that trend will continue. Attraction revenues in addition to that, so tickets, special trains, retail donations, et cetera. And special experiences designed for avid rail fans would be on top of that. They're not included in that sort of typical impact number. In terms of of an attraction, Northern Ontario attraction tourists account for 16% of all of our spending. $179 million of the more than 1.12 billion site Northern Ontario. So that is people coming to visit attractions in Northern Ontario. That's based on statistics will sort of be around the 2013, 2014 period in time. Of those folks who come to attractions, 57% come to historical sites, 37% come to museums and galleries, 24% come to casinos. Now, the change in the whole casino market may actually change the inflection of that number. But we think that the the constant between historical sites, museums and galleries between, you know, almost 40% and 60% is going to stay constant. Historical steam tourist train fits well with that current attraction matrix, especially when you combine it with that, that new attraction North Bay.
So how can we work together? This is my particular interest here because I would like to be, if everything worked out, I would like to be your contact person between our group and 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 the council and any volunteers who who happen to be interested in doing this. So we would have a mutual collaboration for national heritage designation at First Spike with an electronic repository. You can explain electronic repository in case it's it's like a it's an archive.
Available from the internet.
An archive on the internet. Yes. I have trouble with that. Council support resolution and letter for project concept and need for access to O V R tracking. So that's what I was saying about the 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 track.
Yeah, and actually, let me speak to that for a minute, just to provide a little bit of background. So since our previous presentation in the in the past year or so that we've been working on, we have talked with the local rail operators extensively. So we have met with well, we just met with the operating companies at this point to get an initial sense of what's going on. Well, we do know that we need to be able to secure access to use facilities and package will be community support. We have to be able to demonstrate some support for the concept. So in a nutshell, what we're going to do is take this old locomotive that hasn't been fired in almost 75 years at this point, it's been cold. Haul it into a shop, completely strip it down, rebuild it from the ground up over a period of years using largely volunteer efforts and the efforts of those expertise of those of those consultants that we talked about that are experienced in doing this kind of thing. Bring it back to operation in a way that is actually better than when it was first built. In other words, it's not important for this discussion, but some of the technical operations of a locomotive will be modernized to modern railway standards and and ready to roll, match it up with some rolling stock and then have a plan to get it onto a mainline. And one of those locations that we talked about is coming down the old CPR line here, the Ottawa Valley Railway, stopping in Bond Field. This would be one of our terminuses going back to the city of North Bay. And so in that
You brought up rolling stock.
Yeah. So in that, in that, in that connection, you know, we want to to get a sense of the support that exists up there for the concept. You might say, what's it all going to cost? How's it going to happen? When's it going to be delivered? Listen, all of that we're working on at this point in time and we don't have any asks around that from you today. We're not seeking anything from you in terms of those elements, but what we're looking for is support in principle for the concept of doing it, proceeding with it and that we can demonstrate to the companies that we're going to need to work with, that there's community support behind the idea. There is a level of interest at there, but they want to see there's actual support for the concept. When we get through that phase, we'll be able to actually get down to develop a real budget, giving a sense of what things will actually cost. It is not our view at this point that we're looking for municipal funding from any municipality. That's not our approach to it. So I don't anticipate that as being something down the road either. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's fine. As far as I'm concerned with being a liaison between, let's say this council and and our group is I would my first is to is to work on the first spike, get a plaque, get government recognition, make a sign on the road and at that point, it's a national or provincial historical site and and we go from there. And that that would be entirely driven by hopefully private funding and and as I understand it, it might be just the cost of installation of the of the plaque itself. So everything else would be volunteer work.
In terms of the big picture, the only other things we anticipate down the road, asking your assistance of is being able to use the community park and the cupboard area and washrooms. If we have excursions coming down here, we would need to be able to do that. And if you ever decided you didn't want that caboose out there anymore, we wouldn't be interested in having it, but I don't think that would be the case. But if it never happened, we would like to fight the first refusal to take it and make sure it was well cared for. But other than that, all we're really seeking that tonight is just a resolution of supporting principle for the idea of bringing the locomotive back to life, getting it on the rails and seeing it happen. And we think that aside from being great from the standpoint of our our local history, it just would be great for the region in general, something new. You know, when you think of the area from Ottawa through to North Bay over to Western Pacific, down south to Boston and up north to Temecula. This is a railway center. Two transcontinental railways came through here, T N O and Ontario Northland. And yet in all of this area, there's not much in the way of a rail heritage attraction or a rail museum or even railway equipment that you can look at, except you have a nice caboose here or sad looking locomotive in North Bay, a few things like that. But there's not a lot going on. So we'd really like to see something, something that end capital is.
I like your metaphor of restoring an old engine to pristine shape and restoring the community.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from council?
All right, that's great.
I would like to make a couple of comments. I commend you for the your volunteerism to get this project going. I think it's it's an excellent project. And if I may, if I go up here. This is where we were inducted into the Railway Hall of Fame
Yes.
in 2001. And over here, if you see all of these people, the train came in that day and stopped. The children came down and we found out that day that we were getting a free caboose and the young man that worked with the economic development, his dad was out, I think, or a relative out in Alberta somewhere. And we got that the caboose at no cost. The only thing we had to do, we had to pay for the pad. And at that time, we had first bike, we had all of the first bikes. Everybody was wearing them on your shirt. And I I think this is a great project and and I have to say that Elmer put a lot in into the first spike and I I'm glad that you didn't leave us out. And it will be a discussion with council, but I certainly believe that we want to be part of part of your project.
Great. That's great.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
I know it's late. I just make one comment. So we can't do without you guys. And you have to know that the Ottawa Valley Railway is owned by a big private American company called Genesis and Wyoming. They don't pay attention to anything except politics. The only way the local office here will be allowed to work with us is if G and W head office understands that the politicians want Americans are much better at saying to big companies, if you want favorable policy and et cetera, et cetera, you need play ball and you and that's what they understand. So we're not looking for financial support. We understand municipalities are more and more things being downloaded to them. Anything that we can do in terms of leasehold improvements to be able to use your facilities, operating costs for, you know, extra use of the washroom. We're not expecting that to be in your budget. That would be in our budget. But what we need is the political will to see this happen in terms of telling O V R it needs to happen. That's the key point. The rest is conceptual, three to five years, probably $6 million. We've got a budget. We've got the numbers of the budget laid out and who would pay for what. But we haven't got down to the detail and say, what's it going to cost me for operating on your tracks? And that's the next, we got to get to that next level of commitment from the from the key staple. So thank you very much.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Can they go ahead tonight if they want to?
I did do one.
Oh, they do.
I, yeah.
Okay, goodbye.
Right, thanks very much.
If you wanted on our paper, I did do it while they weren't talking. It's not as simple as you think.
Yeah, I do like theirs.
You're going to use their wording maybe, if that's okay.
Whoops.
Perfect, so I think that'll be the resolution that can be read.
Do you want to?
Sure.
Do it now?
I I have no problem doing it now.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else there? One second. Okay, well, pick one.
Pick one. Okay, we'll do the resolution now then?
Yeah.
Yeah. You didn't put the date in.
Well, sorry.
It's your writing. Okay, a resolution of support in principle for the Fire Op five oh three project. Moved by councillor Corbett, seconded by councillor Featherstone, that the Corporation of the Township of Bond Field supports in principle the concept of the Fire Op five oh three organization as presented at the council meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to restore restore Ontario Northland Railway Steam Locomotive Number five oh three to operating condition and return it to service, creating a working heritage railway rail attraction. The goal of the project being to provide residents and visitors with an opportunity to experience history through steam-powered rail travel that is unique to the region and true to our railway history while contributing to the region's economic and cultural vitality. All in favor? Okay, now. Back to the agenda. Next, we have first, second and third reading of a bylaw number two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-three, special zone fifty-four for four fifty boundary road. Moved by councillor Featherstone, seconded by councillor Corbett. Whereas council deems it deems it necessary and expedient to pass three readings of the following bylaw at this session, be it hereby resolved that a bylaw for the purpose of amending bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine being a bylaw to regulate the use of land and the character, location and use of buildings and structures in the township of Bond Field under the authority of section thirty-four of the Planning Act, R S O nineteen ninety, chapter P thirteen. Schedule eight to bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine is amended by changing the zone applied on the lands designated zone from residential first density to special zone number fifty-four S Z dot five four. On the attached schedule to special zone number fifty-four, be read a first, second and third time passed in number two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-three and that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and be engrossed in the bylaw book. Any question? All in favor? Carried. Next, we have bylaw, first, second and third reading of bylaw number two thousand twenty-three thirty-four. Zoning Amendment one oh seven Eric Street from C two to R two. Moved by councillor Featherstone, seconded by councillor Clark. Whereas council deems it necessary and expedient to pass three readings of the following bylaw at this session, be it hereby resolved that a bylaw for the purpose of amending bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine being a bylaw to regulate the use of land and the character, location and use of buildings and structures in the township of Bond Field under the authority of section thirty-four of the Planning Act, R S O nineteen ninety, chapter P thirteen dot two. Schedule A to bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine is amended by changing the zone symbol on the lands designated zone change from commercial highway C two to residential secondary density R two. On the attached schedule, be read a first, second and third time passed in number two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-four and that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and be engrossed in the bylaw book. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Next, we have first, second and third reading of bylaw two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-five, special zone five 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 eight, oh, five five eight, five five eight, right? I think we got too many.
Zone fifty-five.
Oh, zone fifty-five, five, five.
Fifty-eight.
I thought it was too many numbers. Moved by councillor Featherstone, seconded by councillor Corbett. Whereas council deems it necessary and expedient to pass three readings of the following bylaw at this session, be it hereby resolved that a bylaw for the purpose of amending bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine being a bylaw to regulate the use of land and the character, location and use of buildings and structures in the township of Bond Field under the authority of section thirty-four of the Planning Act, R S O nineteen ninety, chapter P thirteen, schedule A to bylaw two thousand and twelve dash forty-nine special is amended by changing the zone symbol on the lands designated zone change from rural to special zone number fifty-five S Z fifty-five. On the attached schedule to special zone number fifty-five, be read a first, second and third time passed and numbered two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-five and that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and be engrossed in the bylaw book. Any question? All in favor? Carried.
Just before you tell them it's not rude if they want to leave. It's not rude if you want to leave.
Okay, we're going to number three point five. And it is the tender results for the excavator rental report from the public works manager. And I just wanted to go with the background of it. Whereas the public works manager, the public works manager prepared a request for quotes for a three-year term in pricing to rent an excavator to implement a ditching program. Four quotes were received and we now have a a motion for the to accept the one quote. Moved by councillor Corbett, seconded by councillor Featherstone. Whereas the public works manager prepared RFQ for a three-year term in pricing to rent an excavator to implement a ditching program. And whereas four quotes were received, now therefore the public works manager recommends to council to enter into an agreement with United Rental for a three-year term. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, now, if the tender results for development road chip and seal, I'm sure there's going to be discussion here.
Read the motion first.
Read the motion first. Moved by councillor Featherstone, seconded by councillor McGinnis. Whereas tender number B O N two thousand and twenty-three oh three, development road reconstruction was issued and closed on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with two bidders both over the budgeted amount. And whereas council has received the reports from Antoine Boucher, municipal contracted engineer and the C A O, now therefore council authorizes the Capital Emergencies Reserve Fund to be used to offset the additional expenses. And further, the council accepts the recommendation of the engineers' report to award the tender to Miller paving for how many kilometers?
Four.
Yeah.
Four kilometers. Any questions? Okay, I'll go to Dan.
It's more, yeah, the numbers aren't feasible for us to do this. I mean, we should be doing, we should be doing this in-house. We shouldn't be having one general do this. So what does that mean? We'll cut costs if we do it, like. Do what part of? Public Works Manager, General the Job, giving it to one company, split it up in between different companies because there's better pricing out there for this. This is.
And then we don't have to dip into reserves.
Right, yeah, so we don't, we shouldn't have to dip into reserves to do four kilometers. I thought, you know, we passed a pretty healthy budget to do the four kilometers. With, it's just not even in the ballpark. We, you know, I feel if we break this up, we could tender separate things up and get away better, get way better pricing. That would be in line with our budget.
So there was like, sorry. There was the three elements of the quote, right? There was, wait a minute, I think I'm still on the. So there was the pulverization, then the granular A, and then really the surface is the three components. And what you're saying is if we tend to those separately?
Yeah, tender the pulverization out and the A gravel, oh, it's tendered separately, so it will get better pricing.
I mean, I I understand you also do this for a living, but that's based on like what you're seeing in the market currently?
Absolutely.
So you've recently done something like this?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'm these numbers are way skewed.
Inflated.
Yeah.
My, typically, when you lump things together, you usually get a better price based on, so it's, I I guess in this type of work, that's backwards, because.
I think we're paying for the project management of it, right?
It's in there, that it's built in.
Right.
Costs, you're saying.
I mean, yeah, we can shave, you know, quite a bit of money off those three numbers.
So maybe if you walked us through the process a little bit, that might be helpful, right? Because again, I'm not a road expert, so when I look at something like this, I, right? So for someone who's done it.
Right.
What were, where are the flags for you, Ben?
Well, I mean, in all three areas, the the numbers are just inflated from what, you know, like you said, I do this for a living. And the numbers I've done was a fraction of half of this cost.
Could this be based on timing? Because we're late in the season and everyone's got their plate full already, could this be, what's factoring?
Well, I I mean, I'm sure that has something to play, it has to play with, right? In that the season is coming to an end, but I mean, I still don't, we could still do this a lot cheaper if if it's broke up. I mean, there's other companies that pulverize for less than what this is being presented as. And same as a chip seal, I mean, we use our our grader to grade the gravel instead of having the contractors grader, right? I mean, and the A gravel was.
Can I, can I say something? But the the engineer concurs with us?
I I, yeah, I don't know why it would, but.
But could he concur with it because it's tendered that way?
It's tendered this way, right?
He would concur with it.
It's tendered this way. I mean, he doesn't have to worry about cost, he just worries. Right, right, easily, yes, absolutely. I mean, like I said, if our public works manager generals this, like make, you know, organize, organizes the pulverization, the A gravel and the chip seal, we will get this at a way better price.
So just for, like, I would hope, like, through you and through the C A O, like, hoping to get some context from the public works manager on that. Is there, like, love to be able to have some thoughts from staff on that?
So O P S standard is that it's not to be laid past September thirtieth.
Sure.
Because of the temperature. There's no guarantee after September thirtieth, they will not warranty after September thirtieth. Because of the temperatures, the, that's why there was a provisional cost in there for to add a polymer to the chip seals so that if we are in a position where it is colder out, you have to start adding other materials to it so that it all adheres and binds to each other because of the temperature differences. Our procurement policy currently would have to tender all these three amounts out again. So the window is six weeks. So then there would be a process, so it would have to be, I'm not saying it would take a week to get everything tendered, because we already know our quantities, et cetera. However, there is a fair tendering process as to how long the tender can be posted and able for others to come in to bid on it. Logistically, we do have the Pine Lake project as well. It has to be completed before winter. So our our people are in Pine Lake doing that job as well. So we would have to pull our resources from Pine Lake up to the Development Road project and get everybody to be able to be on time. So every subcontractor, we would call them, under our general contracting, would have to be to get this job completed by September thirtieth.
So if we waited until the spring, what's the, what's the implications of that? Obviously, the the pricing can change a little bit, but could we be first in on on projects coming spring? Like, I don't know how back ordered companies are.
The companies never tell us how back ordered they are. The risk would be the amount of cost change. We have to take in consideration of the fuel increases. Construction people are paying a higher premium for their workers to retain them because there was a trucker shortage, et cetera. Even within our own public works departments across the province of Ontario, we are having those issues as well. I can't. I think it would be, we're risking it, whether it be cheaper or maybe it would be more expensive. I can't really predict that with the current market.
I mean, we, this is do, like, to me, we we don't tender, we get three price, we change the bylaw. We get three prices from companies for the gravel, for the chip seal and the pulverization and and it'll speed it, speed things up.
I have a question. So the the Pine Lake, it can that go beyond September thirtieth to lay the gravel?
The gravel, it cannot. The ditching, the gravel, it cannot be laid after winter.
No, not after winter, but after September 30th.
It's, we have, it's, it's about a month's job down in there ditching the Pine Lake before we apply the gravel. So if we were to start that project on September 30th, I, I can't predict the winter.
What I, what I don't get is Pine Lake is three-year staff members and the grader up here minimally to grade the pulverization. He, he's a day, day and a half grading that. And then he doesn't need to be there until we lay A gravel. And again, with four kilometers of A gravel, it's only a couple of days of grading.
Right, so we do have to remove a tandem truck off our fleet to go to the Development Road project. So we would have to hire another vehicle to be in Pine Lake and an operator.
It would still be, you know, way cheaper to hire that truck than the numbers we got in here.
I have a question. So the, to the pulver, pulverization of the, of Development Road.
Right.
Is that something that you could do? And I don't, I don't, this might be a stupid question. But is that something that you could do, go in and do the area that's so bad? And, and grade it and leave it till spring? Is that something you could do then?
No, we, if we're not going to do the whole project, we just wouldn't pulverize.
You would not?
No, I would leave it the way it is until.
But that's the bad part of it.
No.
It's just so many humps and bumps and.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, so a month's worth at Pine Lake? So what is the work for a month that you would be doing at Pine Lake?
So we have to ditch all of Pine Lake so in order for your granular to be worthy? So you don't want it washing off the road because there's a lack of ditching. So we predict that it's going to take a month to do all the ditching. So as you ditch, you haul the material away. So it's a process of time to get that finished. We also have to be cognitive that we have a landfill to still bury, we still have maintenance needs. Our service requests have already been pushed, we're telling our service requests that we're a month away from doing any of service requests, getting the asks from our citizens currently, we're telling them it's a month from now.
So we'll kind of ask for reading from our citizens.
Like concerns, oh, the, a rock has popped up in front of our yard.
Thank you.
Do you mind coming to the road and pulling that rock out? So we tell, because I prefer to be honest with the citizens so they don't expect us not to, expect us to come in two weeks. I'd rather be truthful to them and they're very fine with that. However, we do have those other things as well as any weather events.
So, just if I could, so if we were to park this for this fiscal and put the money in reserves is what we would do. We presumably would have a phase two of Development Road that we were going to be budgeting for. You know, I'm going to make a guess that there would be some money in next year's budget for the next phase of Development Road. So four could turn into six or seven or eight kilometers we can potentially do next year.
Or two.
Or two, if the cost goes up significantly. But I guess the, you know, we would be paying that increased cost. Let's not forget, this is phase one of, of probably what, six phases, four phases of Development Road. So we're going to be paying an increased cost anyways. I just don't know if it's not. Like, if we're, if we're up against time, if we're up against, you know, budget, like, if we can get a bigger chunk done next year.
So we do nothing this year again?
Right, then again, it's.
So then we're doing nothing again.
So, but my challenge is, if we don't have time to properly tender this out, I'm not comfortable because I do believe our procurement bylaw or our procurement states that when it comes to this amount of money, we need to be tendering that out. We can't just get quotes.
We can resolution to change that.
So we tendered the project for Development Road as a, as a contractor, general contractor to do that work because we were going, our crew was going to be in Pine, Pine Lake. And they both have to get done within the same two-month period in order to be ready and, and packed or, you know, given the month of October to pack the gravel and everything that needs to be done before winter comes. So we're not just snowpiling everything into the ditches. So it's a very short period of time to get both projects done. Possibly doable, but everything has to align for us to have that. For us to be a general on both projects on that. I agree with Manager Card that we'd have to have another truck hired with an operator in order to get any, like to manage, because we just don't have those resources. We don't have the infrastructure we need to get it done without doing that because we need the water truck on Development Road. So that would have to be done. Our procurement by law does say that it has to be tendered out and it has been tendered out. The tenders that came back, I mean, the low bid is still $131,000 over our budget. So that's quite significant. So you do have the option of, you know, you've met your procurement on this project because you have tended it. But you can reject it. And then if you do want to change the system and how we are going to work Development Road to be managed by the municipality, in the end, by October, it may mean that something isn't done. So if development is the priority, then development would have to be done. But Pine Lake might not have the gravel. So the ditching might be done on Pine Lake, but the gravel may not be on Pine Lake. So we're kind of, it's a risk either way on what we can accomplish. Hopefully, we can accomplish it all, but if everything has to align perfectly for it to happen. So I believe Councilor McGinnis has an amended resolution or a new resolution, resolution, if you do in fact defeat that one, that would allow you to, and, and you have the right in your procurement bylaw that you would be able to waive the procurement bylaw. Because you've done the tender, you could just instruct staff to do three quotes for each of those components. And then we can get the three quotes to see if we are the general, if, if our manager is the general contractor on the project and we're not paying that extra cost. Then you could just get the three quotes and change the system.
Yep. I just want to ask, I'm sorry, we're in this forum.
Yeah.
We only got two.
Right.
Tenders, so are we going to get three quotes?
We just picked three companies and sent them to, you don't, if you send, proof that you've sent them out, you don't necessarily have to get the three quotes back. I mean.
Yeah, a no quote is a quote.
Right.
And maybe we said, is many companies, as we know in the area, that's moving, we send it.
Right.
So I'd much rather finish a project than have to have started. I also don't like rushing against winter and not having that guarantee on the roads. I'd rather, if we're spending this much money, it be done properly. So that nothing comes back in a few years, no use or whatever happens if you're rushing a project.
The thing is, when I do any digs, this is all straightforward stuff. I mean, it's just pulverize, add some gravel and chip seal. I mean, this is all straightforward. It's Pine Lake, same thing, once it's ditched, there's no manpower. I mean, it's just one person out directing truck, belly dumps.
I appreciate that. I think my challenge is, I'm also hearing staff saying that they're hedging bets. They're softening the waters that it might not all happen. So if I can get a commitment from staff saying they are confident that it will happen, then I'm all in. But, I mean, again, I, I don't love the idea of two half-finished products, projects. I do like the idea of, you know, there is an upside to getting a larger chunk done of Development Road all at once next year because, I mean, it's going to be disruptive to everybody in the area. So, you know, the larger the chunk we can do, I'm trying to find a happy positive. And that's about the only one I can come up with.
Right, I mean, this is.
What do you see, what, how much difference do you see in this? And, and asking that question, but before you give me an answer, I asked Dicky this one already. When we bring ourselves down to the, what we have left in the reserve, do you foresee anything that we could possibly need that? And that's what, that's what I don't like, to bring it, bring ourselves down to $230,000. Doesn't take us long to spend $50,000, $60,000. So what, and that's if we went with that, with that tender, right? So do you foresee anything that, that, anything at all that we might have to, we might have to spend a large amount of money? And that might be a hard question, but I just wonder what you think.
Right, so I think in my report, I said in this year, we are using close to $800,000 of reserve. So it's gas tax money that's in that reserve. What is usable and what's, I guess, available? Because some, some of those reserves are just strictly, you know, at the cemetery, you can't spend it anywhere else. Parks and Rec, you can't spend it anywhere else. Landfill closure costs, you can't spend it anywhere else. So there's roughly $700,000 that would be left, maybe, maybe at tonight, if we use this capital emergency one that would be available. We don't have a strat plan yet, so I don't know what the, the next four years or the next six years might be in priorities. We know that we need to do a lot of road work. Roads are your number one concern, I've heard that from, from everyone. We do need any medical building and, you know, there will be funding that is available for that, but we'll still have to put our share in. So I do suspect the dipping into the reserves as opposed to putting that learned expense right into the capital levy. And then we still have Castle Home that we have a very unknown for in Castle Home.
Yeah, that one's a scary one.
Okay, so if I could.
Yep.
What makes sense to me is short of, I don't want you to put numbers on this because I don't want to taint the process of getting quotes. And we've talked about numbers because the quotes will come exactly what we said the quote should come in at. And even if it, so do we think that it will come down enough that we will not need to dip into reserves?
You should be, we should be able to do this job under, under the tendered amount, under the budgeted amount.
Under the budgeted amount. So worst case scenario is we go out, we get three quotes or anything. It turns out that all of that's still going to be over, over our budgeted amount. We still have the decision, the point where we could make and say, yeah, we're not, we're not comfortable to dip into our reserves. We will wait until next year. So it's a timing issue, I understand that. But I think, I think we go ahead with three quotes.
Right, there's no.
And, and revisit, and if it needs to be special counseling, whatever we need to do so we aren't the hindrance of holding this up. Just, I, I mean, I don't mean to speak for us to counsel, but gosh, like, I can be available in moments notice.
Right, I mean, this job, that job should come under what we budgeted hands down.
Right. Okay. That's what I'm finding. Is there, when, when we send this stuff out like this for tender, do they price roads based on how many kilometers are going? So if they had to come this year and do four and then come next year and do four, would we pay more at that point than coming twice, than coming once to do a bigger trunk?
You will pay a little bit more because of the mobilization costs.
But it's.
Yeah.
Mind you.
Mind you, I mean, I just, those numbers can be, those numbers can be chiseled way down.
Yeah, in order to be only, to bring it down to 131,000, we have to remove some of the items. We have to bring that down. The, what we originally requested, right? In the tender. So part of that has been, like, to remove the granular A and bring it down to 28,000. And the contingency is brought down to 10,000. So in order to remove those things that we requested for in the tender, that, after we remove that, then we're at 131,000 short. Were not what we originally tendered for.
Right, so there were provisional items in, in the tender. And some, you know, like the polymer we think we may need, but that one's just too risky to take out. We took out the contingency. But the engineer is confident on the quantity, so we can't reduce the quantities. In rego, in going back up from three quotes, what we're doing is essentially just asking for, there, there's no built-in cost for the management of the project. The project management, those costs will be removed because the municipality will absorb them using our own crew. It's, it's the only way that we can see that we could reduce the costs. I mean, we're hesitant in saying, you know, Councilor Corbett's correct, we're hesitant in saying that, yes, everything can get done. And, you know, everything does have to line up, but.
It just, I mean. We keep pushing stuff off, it just keeps, you know, we're back into the same thing. Nothing's getting done, nothing's getting done.
I'm not comfortable dipping into the reserve.
No, no, I mean, we shouldn't have to. That budget's healthy enough that that work could get done for that price.
Then this new quote, how did it change so much from the previous quote? Like, when, when was the previous quote, quote obtained?
We don't obtain quotes, it's unfair tendering to do.
Yeah, we, I don't think we've ever had a tender like this.
No.
We've never tendered it.
Right, we have conversations.
Because we had like a.
Like statutory quotes, the road need study was in, indicated that it's a $16.80 per square meter job to do a rehabilitation and a double surface treatment. Those numbers were actually developed by our engineer in January.
I just don't understand how, like, it can be so vastly different from.
I think every year though, so Manager Card gave us that nice report. So in 2020, we had a quote and what was needed. And then in 2021, we had a quote of what was needed to be done. And then in 2022, we had another one. And every year it went, it went up. So I would not like to have another year go by and us do nothing.
My thoughts, both jobs can be done.
Okay.
I mean, we, we send out for pricing three quotes and go at it. I mean, both jobs should be able to be done if, if, the only thing is, if we can get the chip seal down before the September 30th. Which, I mean, it's, again, chip seal, two days to do that road.
Four kilometers.
To chip seal. So it's not like we're talking weeks to do this. I mean, it's two days chip seal, it's a day to pulverize.
So.
We also must consider availability of the contractors.
Outside of that, I, I still say these two jobs can be done in that timeframe.
Well, I think, Councilor Corbett was right, there's no risk, right? Let's get our quotes and let's get on it as quick as we can and call a special meeting when we, when we need to. And I guess my only other question to staff is, is there anything that you need from council to help reprioritize work? So that this can be a priority, so that we're taking other things that you're feeling pressure from a council perspective? To free staff up, like, I, like, I, I mean, obviously, we're trying to be fair to staff, right? So if there's things that council outside of Pine Lake and Development Road, if there's other things that we should be considering and saying, you know what? It's fine if you hold back because we really want to see this work. I don't know, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but if there is, come back. How's that?
I appreciate that. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but when we bring back the three quotes, when we have that special meeting, you can certainly make any recommendations that do come up at times. So to formalize this, you have to defeat the resolution that you read. And then someone would have to move in second reservation with council.
Okay, I read it.
Yeah.
Do you want a recorded vote? Can you ask for a recorded vote at this time?
Any member of council can.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote. And it's here. So we're going to defeat this one, all right? And I'm going to go, Donald.
Yes, to defeat.
Jason Corbett.
Nay to defeat, I, yeah, it's a nay, nay, but it's, yeah, to defeat the motion, yeah. Make sure we're all clear on.
Dave Featherstone.
Opposed.
Dan McGinnis.
Yes. Defeat.
Me. Okay, now what do I have to do, sign it?
You, you put defeated, a check mark where it says defeated?
And sign it.
And then sign it.
Everybody in favor of what they told me a minute ago?
Yeah.
There. Okay, now here's a story. Move by Councilor McGinnis, second by Councilor Featherstone. Whereas Tender Bond, BON 2023-03, for the reconstruction of Development Road, received two tenders that were over budget. Whereas council rejects both tenders received due to cost. And whereas council deems this project a priority and instructs staff to be the general contractor to save on costs. And whereas the procurement policy requires the project to be, to be tendered. And it was unsuccessfully to be within the. And it was unsuccessfully to be within the budget. Now therefore council authorizes waiving the procurement policy and hereby permit staff to re-quote, to request quotes instead. And I'm going to go with the recorded vote again. Donna Clark.
Yes.
Jason Corbett.
Yes.
Steve Featherstone.
Yes.
Dan McGinnis.
Yes.
Me. All in favor, we already said. I said this was going to be a fast meeting.
Oh, you never should say that aloud.
Okay, so that's it, eh?
You have.
I know. But the important stuff. Okay, so the next one is support for Chanum Kent. Time for Change of Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Oh, no.
I have not prepared motions for those. If council wishes to support them, I will bring the motions back at the next council meeting.
That goes there with you. So do you, you want to support that? Yes. Legislative amendments to improve municipal codes of conduct and enforcement. You want to support that?
Yeah.
Yes, so four point one and four point two to bring back?
I would say yes.
Sure. I think we, we lost our principle of like going through and actually, I feel like we say yes to just whatever everything so. And fair enough, if you're come, like I'm not trying to judge your yes to these. I'm just like, I would, yeah, fair enough.
But you can vote no. You have that choice.
No, but I mean, if it's going to come back, I can vote no at that point, I guess. But I'm just, like, it's, staff are having to prepare all these resolutions now anyway. So I feel like this step is now defeats the purpose of this step of like, do we want to support if it's a yes to everything, then.
And we haven't seen these before.
No.
I, I thought we saw the.
No, it's a different, I looked into it to make sure and it's different.
This one is about the, the onerous and vexatious, right? So that's why I, I thought I read that before. Cause we do, so the ones that we've passed before, if it's coming from another municipality, we were not, we're automatically just supporting that, right?
I don't bring those back if you've already supported this one. Uh, municipal freedom of information has not come to council yet. The second one is, uh, from what I understand, uh, the bill was defeated.
It was, but I thought this one came to, to us as well. I.
Well, this is to ask the provincial legislature to reconsider it.
Okay, okay. So it's the second time. So we did approve it the first time. Cause I know, I've actually, I can remember reading both of these before. So.
And if I could, your worship. I have a context question to you and I guess to Nikki. So from your experience. Been around the block a couple of times, done, done the mayor thing and yours. Are, are these effective at all at the provincial level? Like in my time working in provincial politics, I can tell you, the, like, these were just noise. Like it wasn't really effective. So I feel like we're spinning our wheels and spinning our wheels and creating this work. And I'm like, I agree, really happening.
And you're probably right, but do we, are we ever heard?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if we go there and talk, are we ever heard? So at least we're raising, at least we're showing, oh yeah, we know what you're doing. We wanted it.
This is our recourse. This is how we get it on record. This is, this is what we do.
I would far prefer picking stuff we're really passionate about, asking for delegations when we're at the AMO conference or we're at a conference. Speaking to the cabinet ministers, that has far more effect or, or in my experience, which I get is a couple of years old now. Like that is the effective avenue to get some of this done, but.
So we might want them to support us one time.
Yeah, exactly. And what's to say that these municipalities aren't making their delegations and doing that? Just because Bonfield has not yet, right?
Fair enough. I'm just, I struggle with.
It's only.
They don't get a ton of traction, but.
It's only five minutes. You're wasting ten.
No. That would be fair if it was only on us, but I look at our staff and it's, we're adding work to staff.
The, the issue with preparing for the meetings is not knowing what council wants to support. So if it's been seen before, then I don't bring it back. But then it's like, do I take the time of preparing the motion? And it's not supported, or do I not do the motion and then I have to bring it back? So for me, my, like for the staff, when they're doing it, I think it's going to be better. And I think CIO Kunko may agree that we should go ahead and prepare all of the motions for these. And then at the meeting, council can decide, yes, no, yes, no. Then having to redo the agenda the next time and the copying and everything.
Visiting this twice is just ridiculous.
Yes.
If it can, perhaps another, another way to do it would be it's on the agenda. If a counselor wants to support it. Then call and we will prepare the motion to have it at the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
And then we're not doing the motion if we, if nobody has called to let us know that they want to support it, we won't do the motion, but you will still have received the information.
But what if I call and say I want to support it and Jesus says no?
I have, I can vote against it. Yeah.
So that'll be at the council, then we could do it as suggested.
Even if it's just an individual council, then at least it triggers, bring it forward. If it has supporter on the table, it gets voted, then fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So our work plans, is that for information or do we just for information?
My trucks moved.
It was very cute, the little trucks in the air.
She got really fancy on her.
Yeah. You've got nice colors.
Well, yeah, I have pretty colors, but I don't have a truck. Um, but yeah, we just, um, this was requested. It's just kind of set out what we, our goal for the remainder of the year. I mean, budget was just adopted. Um, and there's a lot of the budget items in here as well as operational items that are in here. Um, but if, if a resume does ask counselors a question, you will be able to say, yeah, we're working on that. This is, looks like the timeframe and it's going to be in. I mean, these are all flexible timelines, but these are what our, what our plan is at this point.
I appreciated that. It was, it was good to see where the, if something's coming up that you're wondering about or. And I thought, I thought it was good information.
I would just ask, these are a matter of public record. They're in our document that's publicized. Can we actually add them to our website as well?
Sure.
I just like the idea of people having access to knowing and accountability is a good thing. So here's what we expect to get done. And if we need to create a variant, sort us to where something didn't happen, we do that. But I, we often get asked like, what the heck is happening? What are you doing? Well, now it's easily referred to. We don't have to go back and find. Today's minutes and all that kind of stuff. It's just we can refer to the website. It would be helpful.
Okay, next, it looks like we're.
Can we, um, sorry, I thought we're done. I think everything's done.
Wait, I have a question about this.
Can we call our next meeting at this point?
Wait, I have a question about the work plans, though. So something that I had. And I, I, I know that, uh, Manager Carr had mentioned already that you already do, uh, every day, how many things you've done or. Right? So like I, I would really strongly like to see some key performance indicators. Uh, that is tied back to our budget because. This is great, but I still want to know how much it's costing, right? So if you already keep logs, so it shouldn't be that difficult to understand. Again, we can put a price on a kilometer or on a, how much we know or, or what have you, so that we can see. I'm, you know, I think for us right now, we just passed a pretty hefty tax increase. So. For me, I want to be super, super scrutinizing everything that we do because. It's important, I think, people elected us to really manage and be good stewards. And so for me to understand where our money is going, a KPI will do that for me. I don't want to add more work. But you've already told me that you've got the logs, that you do this on a daily basis. So maybe even a quarterly report. Of, you know, what we're spending on this amount. And I think that people might like to see that as well, right? So you know, they're pay, they're paying a lot more now. Uh, people are asking what services are we getting? And so I, I think this would be helpful. And, and again, public works is our biggest line item. It's our biggest line item. So I think if we can, you know, show them that, I think it would be helpful. It would certainly help me.
Yeah. So for KPIs, we do have to do that through the asset management plan. So that will, it's all incorporated in there. So those numbers are being factored in and being done. Um, this was just to get on paper. Here's what we want to accomplish. Here's what we want to do. KPIs are coming, probably within the next year, less than a year, actually. We have to have those KPIs anyway for asset management.
Okay.
So, uh, just to, um, Council Clark's point, I think. That, and I don't know if it's necessary to KPI, but I look at Sunnyside Road, we're going to dig out three Sunnyside Road, see if there's a spring underneath rectify issues with the soft spot. What would be helpful is how many man hours do we think that's going to take? And if there's any hard costs? Like if there, and then South Shore Road, we're going to press Culver with twelve hundred millimeter at Creek coming from, uh, Bush past the swamp. How many man hours are there any hard costs? So then we can actually start defending and be like, listen, you want to know what our public works department does? That takes however many hours and that takes that much dollars. We currently, I don't feel, I have the tools to be able to truly defend all the great work here. And I, I just want to be able to have that tool and be able to be like, you know, when I get stopped at baseball last night and somebody starts asking about our taxes. I'm unable to have like a few examples and that's, that's the tools that would be helpful for me.
And I think you do sell yourself short, right? It's kind of like you put a one liner in, prepare for candidate day. And I want to know, well, what does that mean, right? Does that take a day? Does that take a week? Does that take, right? And you said it, when you started listing off all the things, it was like, oh, okay. But it's the, the one liner. Again, I think you brought it up last time, brag a little bit, because you are doing work, right? So put, put the stuff that you're, that you're doing, because it's a lot.
Anything else?
You have item four point five.
Hmm?
Item four point five.
Yeah. I was saying that before these guys.
You just wanted a really short meeting today, eh?
I told Anna it's going to be a really short meeting. She said, don't count on it. I only had chips for dinner, a bag of chips. Here, where are.
I had a cup of water.
And Donna, didn't you bring a cookie?
I know, I was like, I, I, what'd you make for dessert? Nothing.
Where did I?
Spoiled us.
Where did my, uh. My police information go? Right here. Yep. So it looks like the, they've decided they finalized the board composition. And it looks like from what I see that we will be going with East Ferris and Chisholm. And, and I'm happy because I feel like Judge Judy, I should have a flyswatter.
Nope, as the person sits beside you, I disagree.
Keep lying on it. So, and that's, that's fine. We're going to go wherever they tell us to go anyways. I guess the next thing is, does anybody want to see an adjournment?
Can we, can we schedule the next meeting? Like if we're, like council doesn't want to hold up public works, right? So everybody's busy. We don't want to send out emails. I don't know how long it's going to take to get quotes. Is it easier?
Can we add to at another date?
Like, is that easier?
Reserve next Thursday or maybe next Friday morning?
Okay.
Better go Thursday. We're all on, on during the week.
I know.
Right?
But we. Yes, you're going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Forum of Council is going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You're back on Thursday. That will hopefully give us a week to get some quotes.
And you have a meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Thursday night is fire department, but at seven. So six o'clock. So.
This meeting shouldn't take more than five minutes.
Right.
Thursday, no, I thought fire was the twenty ninth, was August twenty ninth, the Tuesday.
I have it as August twenty fourth at seven P M. Based on an email.
On my calendar, that one got canceled.
Yeah, it's August twenty ninth.
Changing all these things around.
Isn't it August twenty ninth?
I'm not sure what the meeting was.
My calendar.
No, August twenty fourth. I'll delete that. I'm available Thursday.
Really early on Thursday, open.
Really early, like Thursday, okay.
So I'm going to have to zoom.
Thursday? We're going to have it on Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, because we're gone Monday, Tuesday.
Right.
Wednesday. But I don't want to have it in the morning.
No, Thursday evening.
We're missing three days.
Yeah, could be like even, cause there is five, five.
Right. Okay. Can somebody please tell me the time?
Eight twenty seven. It's actually not that long of a meeting, just for the record. Less than a public works meeting.
Yeah, an hour and twenty seven minutes.
Move with Council Featherstone, second by Council Clark, that this special meeting in council be adjourned at eight twenty seven P M. All in favor? Carrie.
It only feels longer, so I'm hot in here.